I'm just gonna throw the whole thing away.
It is six thirty, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, is there anyone here for public input? Anyone for public input? Anyone for public input? All right, review and approve council agenda.
I'll move to approve. I'll move to approve as presented.
Second. Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda items, item A, approve eight seven twenty-three council meeting minutes. Item B, approve emergency management joint powers agreement. Item C, approve resolution declaring support for Glacial Lakes Trail. Item D, approve fraud policy. Item E, approve moving employee from temporary to part-time.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, passed unanimously. Item A, consider RFPs for the public safety facility.
I'll second that.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, passed unanimously. Item B, consider employee position job review.
You guys are moving at lightning speed and some of us can't keep up with your. There we go. And I do have Sarah Town on with me, but I'll just go through this as a overview and I can certainly turn it over to her and then answer any questions that anyone might have. But as part of our pay compensation plan that we had had the council consider at the last meeting, during that discussion, we had indicated that there were seven positions that were being reviewed by Baker Tilly for some considerations and the results of those will be coming back to you tonight for for discussion and consideration. And so I'm gonna pull up those recommendations that are from Baker Tilly. The Facility Events Coordinator, that position was created approximately four years ago, as alleged, continues to develop, the responsibilities have changed. The title didn't feel like it reflected the duties of the position and line up with that. So the recommendation was to change the title from the Facility Events Coordinator to the Facility Events Supervisor and then approving some of the modifications in the job description that just clearly identify more with that particular position and that would adjust points to three fifty-seven point five, but does not do any changes in the actual pay grade. And I'll keep moving, if you have any questions, feel free to give me. The mechanic foreman, which was in our current structure, it was the mechanic. In reviewing this, there were a lot of the duties in that mechanic position where the portion of that work was really being more of a fleet management position in charge of, you know, making sure that all the equipment that we have is being serviced properly when it needs to be replaced and such. And so as a result, the description needed to be modified and included a change in the title points and then the grade. So this one would would be to create what we are calling a new position for that that position, mechanic foreman, and improve the job descriptions, which would adjust the points to three twelve and make that pay grade change to a seven.
Okay, question on that?
Yeah.
Is that just at his same pay grade, but just changed to grade seven on a different?
He.
Oh, it's a great, the pay grade.
Pay grade change.
I mean, the step wouldn't stay the same.
Yeah.
The steps are same, the grades are different.
But he's going to be on this, he's going from a pay grades five.
Six to a five?
He's going from a five to a seven. Based off of that level of responsibility. And the additional responsibilities. Then it was, we still have a mechanic position that we'd like to just leave, there's no one in that position right now, but it was in a, but it is a budgeted position for twenty twenty-three, just to leave that in and it basically all that is, is having the same, just the job duties of a mechanic, which would actually be doing the the actual work of oil changing and any of the work part of it, but not taking any of the fleet management part of it. And that stays as everything would be as the same. For the maintenance worker position, the ma- maintenance worker position was at the top of a pay grade four, in fact, one point from a pay grade five. And so reviewing those job duties, additional consideration was given to the variety of equipment that they are required to operate in addition to the the title of maintenance worker, a lot of times from what Ms. Town has shares with us is that the maintenance worker really reflects more of a labor kind of a position and ours is kind of all encompassing where we require them to do labor work and to do some of the different heavy equipment. Some cities have heavy equipment operator positions and so the recommendation with that was to change that job title from maintenance worker to a public works technician, which reflects that. The other thing in the job descri-
The change from and to.
I'll get, can I finish what I was gonna say and then I'll talk, okay. So that one then changes because of the additional duties of being on call, which they're required to do water treatment and splash pad on-call rotations. And as a result, their, the points change from one eighty-five to two oh two and it would move it, cause I, like I said before, they were at a top of a four, it would move it from a top, a pay grade four to a pay grade five. The water resource and facility logistics technician position, really it's the additional certifications that are required to do the water resource aspects of that particular position and that changed the points from one seventy-eight to one eighty-seven and moved it from a pay grade four to a five. The payroll HR clerk. There's been additional responsibilities in the human resource aspects of that particular position and it is recommended that that particular position change title grades from a payroll, payroll clerk, HR, payroll and HR clerk to an HR generalist to better reflect all of those duties. And then it would adjust the points from two thirty to two seventy-five and change it from a pay grade six to a seven. The PD admin assistant, this particular position just had some modifications to the job description to better reflect the responsibilities, which changed the points from two thirty to two forty-two and there's no recommendation for pay grade changes. And lastly is the records technician, the position has taken on the evidence side of things and that's the only position that does that evidence and so that is therefore the increased points of one sixty-three to one ninety-five. This particular position title is being recommended to be changed to reflect the evidence, so it does, it still does all of the records functions as well as the evidence, so it's a records and evidence technician and that change in points brings that from a pay grade four to a pay grade five.
Council questions?
On the maintenance side, maintenance worker.
Yep.
They get compensated for on-call time, is that right?
They get what?
They get, yeah, they get paid for when they're on-call, yes. Yep, as part of their union contracts, yep. This is actually reflecting the actual, they have to have some general knowledge of the water treatment plant and some of those functions to be able to service that and then they also do some maintenance work that's related to the water systems. Those small changes are what made that adjustment from the four to the five, realizing they were only one point from a four to a five already, based off of those additional duties.
I'll add one component, Chana, so the other one in looking in relation to those, formerly the maintenance worker, now public works technician, in relation to a utility operator and speaking with supervisor and getting feedback on their working conditions, the amount of time spent in similar positions to those utility operators put them kind of on par in terms of working conditions, which was also reflected in the points change.
Thank you for that, I couldn't remember that.
All right, council?
You know, when we go through these studies, I wish when we go to vote on them that we have all information prior to when we vote on this kind of stuff.
That is.
Well, this was in your packet.
Yeah.
No, but we didn't have the results of these studies.
Yeah, they were in your packet.
Which should have been in, when we voted last, two weeks ago on compensation.
That was the plan.
That's.
And then now these are the recommendations.
Before we vote on those types of plans, which is gonna cost the city a lot of money, we should have all the information before we make the final decision. And we didn't have this bit of that information.
Didn't we not know what this plan was gonna cost at that meeting?
Yeah.
Yes?
We knew this was gonna happen.
This is gonna add another thirty.
Twenty-two thousand.
This was incorporated, yep.
Twenty-two thousand, this year. Well, that's what it's gonna add, yeah.
Right.
Yep.
But it has, but going through the appeal process, that part of that cost associated with that is incorporated into your overall implementation plan and that was that, so.
Couldn't vote until the repeal is.
And you had the option at the last meeting to wait if you wanted to do that and the council as a group decided to move forward.
Maybe, maybe it's council members, Mike, that don't wanna give out any raises or just scales is why the state mandates us to study it. And then for make recommendations and changes to our pay scales. Cause that's what we're following.
Not gonna get into an argument on this.
We're following state.
Right.
Things the state tells us we have to do, so.
You understand how much it's gonna cost us more in pay next year just for pay? So we're gonna have to cut other things out of the budget that may be needed because we have to do what the state told us.
And Mike, we need staff and we can have all the best equipment in the world.
You can argue.
We don't have our operating. We are, we, how many police officers did we lost at St. Cloud?
Three.
Frank, don't go there.
And that's recently.
Don't go there, Frank.
Where am I going?
We'll be here all fricking night.
I'll make a motion to approve.
So when you approve that, can you, the attached recommendations from Baker Tilly as presented, just as a clarification, just so I make sure I have all of those, I think you can do it then all in one motion, rather than having to do all of those individually, if that's what your desire to do.
Oh, yeah, I wanna clean it all up in one shot. So what did you say, the attached information?
The attached recommendations from Baker Tilly as presented.
There you go, move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously.
Thank you, Sarah, for all of your work on this, we appreciate it.
My pleasure, anytime, Wake Park.
Thanks.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, right. Item C, park building improvements.
Sorry, that's me.
Yep.
I'm getting there, there we go.
No, I printed this out and then I forgot it. So we could do the à la carte thing.
Oh.
Forgot to bring it with.
Okay. So, yeah, can you pull the?
I can, what did you want me to pull up?
I don't know.
Does that?
I've got a à la carte type of a.
Okay, hold on.
Okay, it's one that's got some highlighted stuff on it.
I don't know why this goes down there and the rest go up there, we got her.
Yeah, that one.
There you go.
I don't know, if you make it smaller and maybe you won't be able to read it, but I don't know.
We'll get it.
Well, well, Son is trying to get that there.
There.
So, council.
Getting close.
At last work session, we, we had a discussion about the existing park improvements that were not done for last year. So I got some guidance from you is how do you, where you wanted to go with this. On this sheet, it'll show the standing seam roof, I'll talk at the top there with the roofing for each building, warming house. We had a cost for standing seam back in twenty-two, this is the cost to do it this year in blue. Or we can go asphalt, asphalt shingles, that's the red column from twenty-two, the new cost in twenty-three. Same thing for community park, I'm not gonna read through the numbers there. Down below is siding and miscellaneous, so Rivers Edge, the Boy Scout building, we talked about doing some doors down there and we had steel siding, again, twenty-two number in red to the twenty-three number in blue. And then there was also a quote out there to do doors and siding with the Nova brick to match the existing buildings in Rivers Edge Park. Again, the number in, well, it's in blue there, sixty-eight five should have been red, but, and then the new number, eighty thousand this year. When we went out, we, we looked at doing a, a painting of the existing siding, so that'd be power washing and painting the building except, so that meant that the door replacement had to come out as a separate quote. Was not able to get a second quote for the door replacement or painting. It's kinda hard to get house painters these days. So we reached out to, to Vernig and Smarton Construction, so Smarton Construction gave us a number of seventy-nine hundred and sixty for the door replacement. Vernig Painting, to do the painting and siding is five thousand dollars. And then I kept in the overhead door, that still needs to be replaced, there was a slight increase there. Just to cut to the chase, what I'm gonna recommend, knowing what we talked about at the work session would be is to do asphalt shingles at the community park, South Pavilion and the warming house, along with the door replacement at the Boy Scout building, paint and site it, paint the siding, replace the overhead door. Comes to a grand total at the very bottom of forty-two thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars. Caveat, they're six to eight weeks out with shingles, so their hope is to get it done yet this year, but it's kind of up in the air. All the other stuff could be finished this year. So that's, that's well underneath the hundred and three thousand or eighty-six thousand that we had last year, so. So I'm just looking for council feedback, if that's the right direction to go, this is an à la carte, so we could pick and choose if you wanted to. That's just my suggestion to get started.
I'll make a motion to approve Bill's recommendation.
I'll second that.
Further discussion.
Was, I thought the shingles were already done on the Boy Scout building?
They are, the Boy Scout, this is the warming house in the South Pavilion.
Yep.
Oh, not the Boy, the Boy Scout is just the painting?
The painting and the doors.
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 And the door.
Yep.
I thought I seen the shingles in there too.
Nope.
Okay.
That's, that's why I wanted it printed out, so I can, but, we're good.
Further discussion?
You wanna print out?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Item D, consider lease agreement extension of six oh two Third Street South Building.
I was approached by Centra Care, that they have an interest in continuing on with our lease of our old public works facility building, that lease is up in October and I think I'm really just moving it forward for consideration at this particular point. I think they're annual leases that we could have and at this particular point, I don't know that we have any other needs for that facility, but we still wanna keep retaining it until we know what it is, so it's a good use of the facility, so it's just extending that same agreement that was, has been in place with Centra Care in the past.
I'll approve the new agreement.
I'll second.
And second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Item E, preliminary and final plat, Industries West Plat Five.
Mayor Miller, council members, I'll try to keep this one kinda brief. This is a request for plating of an industrial property approximately six point one-one acres off of Julep Road, just to the north, for reference, to the north of the newly developed Lamar Billboard property, north of Highway twenty-three. This property was previously planted as a part of a larger remnant outlot when the Excel property to the northwest was recently sold last year, I believe. We do require the plating and configuration to a lot block designation before any development. We don't have any firm development plans for this property yet, but that would most likely be the case, the representative from the applicant is here and can speak to that if he'd like. Property is owned, or, excuse me, I one light industrial, we expected it would be a light industrial nature type development. We do have utilities available to the property via Julep Road to the south, there is a discontinued ditch that runs east-west through the property, the owners have presented intent to likely fill that ditch and they have received a go-ahead from the Sock River Watershed District to do that, it has been discontinued and does appear to be viable for filling. But our team, staff, folks will continue to work with, with them throughout whatever their development proposal may firm up with regards to that, that particular ditch. Because it's not been previously platted, payment in lieu of parkland dedication is required, the park board has recommended, excuse me, a required payment amount of thirteen thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars, as usual for industrial property, that's based on five percent of the extrapolated value of the property from the larger seventy-eight point six-two acre outlot. That's based on the current county assessor's office valuation of the vacant land. The Planning Commission did review their request last week, the eighth, and held their associated public hearing, they did have a bit of discussion regarding the existing ditch, then the applicant clarified that, that has been formally discontinued and the sign-off from the Sock River Watershed District has been obtained. They did recommend approval of their request, so I would recommend approval of the preliminary plat with the following condition, single condition, property is subject to requirement for payment, payment in lieu of parkland dedication in the amount of thirteen thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars. Payment is required prior to a fixing of city signatures upon the plat for recording. The determination as to who is responsible for payment is to be decided and established between property owner and any potential buyer or developer, provided that they satisfy that condition of the preliminary plat, I'd also recommend adoption of the resolution approving the final plat.
That's a motion.
All right.
I'll make a motion as to the following and the findings from John.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. You got it, Thomas. All right, item F, resolution of support regarding establishment of scientific and natural areas.
Mayor Miller, council members, folks in the audience right home, I have a lead with this particular request is a little bit out of the ordinary for us, I do have a, kind of an amendment, I wasn't able to get into the staff report, but instead of a request for resolution of support, we consider this a request for resolution of approval. That's at Stearns County, Stearns County's request, so if you basically consider anywhere it says support, consider that approval, that would be appreciated and we can reflect that on any resolution that you may forward. This request has been submitted by the Minnesota DNR at request of Stearns County, the proposal is for the resolution of approval for proposed acquisition of approximately eighty acres of property owned by Tom and Susie Ardolph on County Road one thirty-seven for inclusion into their scientific and natural areas program. Proposal would consist of acquisition in fee ownership by the, by the state and the DNR, that's different than the existing SNA areas that are conservation easements on Stearns County. Quarry Park property. I've included some maps and surveys of the, of the area, but in short, the area that they're looking at for consideration and establishing as a SNA property is not well-suited for development, just given the amount of Rocco cropping and granite in there, there's, from a scientific or a preservation aspect, there's certainly things to be said and Mr. Blackwin is here from the DNR, he has a brief presentation to provide too, but I think this is kind of a best-case scenario for this particular property that can maintain areas that aren't suited for, you know, readily developable and maintain them as a backdrop for future development that may occur on the remainder of the, the property, about eighty acres or so remaining. If the process moves forward, we will need to work through some subdivision aspects and we're already working with, with the DNR and the property owners to look at effectuating the split for acquisition, acquisition, acquisition and transfer to the DNR. There might be a couple options, whether it's plating or potentially some administrative subdivisions, perhaps a variance if they end up with a, a small parcel, all things that could be potentially brought forward, doesn't necessarily have to be, but it's a matter of kinda which way they want to approach it. This request is not a zoning action that requires public hearing or Planning Commission review, so we did not have that component. This was driven by Stearns County and the DNR wanting to ensure a coordination with us due to location of the property adjacent to Quarry Park and within the city limits. In researching the, our history with regard to the existing Quarry Park and the surrounding SNA properties, I have not been able to locate any information or documentation that referenced any firm cap or limitations on establishment of SNA areas or Quarry Park expansion. I am supportive of the request and believe that given the unique conditions of the property, it's, again, well-suited to be retained as a natural area to benefit the public, it is something that would be open to the public and serve as a natural featured element to the future development which may occur on the proposed remaining acreage. I would recommend approval of the requested resolution of approval. That being said, I can open it for, for questions or if Mr. Blackwin wants to give, we have a PowerPoint or you have, you have copies in front of you as well.
Yeah, we have copies. I have a question, what are the, how much they pay, the taxes on it?
Oh, on stuff that I had put together?
Yeah.
That I had, or that John has.
There's something with twenty-some thousand.
Yeah, there, there's kind of an alternative payment and I'll, I'll defer to, to Mr. Blackwin to, to handle that, it's, it's a.
Okay.
Because it's a, it would be, under this arrangement of state-owned property, there is a payment in lieu of taxes or something to that effect, I don't wanna mince words, but let him speak to that.
Okay.
I guess I have a question also.
Mine up, you can come up.
Something like this happens to this large of an area, for one, I don't know what a, present comp plan had this zoned as, and secondly, shouldn't we have a public meeting so the people can know what's gonna happen out in that area? Us making the decision on our own, it's gonna affect a lot of people out this way, so me, I would table this till next time, have a public meeting so the public is aware of what's gonna happen to this particular piece of land.
As I mentioned, this is not something that, that's in bounds of what would require a, a, a meeting, you know, there's, there's no zoning actually being requested, essentially it's, you know, a private sale between property owners, to be, to be honest, I'm not sure our approval is needed at all.
Just a transfer of land is all it is.
Supporting what they're doing.
No, there, there's no, there's no development being proposed, there's no rezoning being proposed, it's, it's not something that.
Yeah, but you're gonna change the zoning that's there.
No, there's no, there's no rezoning, it's, it's a grow residential, they, it, it can be there right now, it's, there's literally nothing that will, would change with that property, so I, I don't think we have, I don't know if I could find a way that we would have to hold a public hearing for this particular aspect. This is, if, if that were the case, we would have done that, but like I said, this is not a, a, a normal sort of aspect for us, that's why I had to go back and look at the, the records to kinda see, is there, is there a precedent for this that, you know, that required a zoning action and not that I could find.
Okay. If I could add to that, I, my name is Bill Blackwin, I am the statewide acquisition coordinator for the Scientific and Natural Area Program and with me tonight are Tom and Susie Ardolph, the landowners, and then Ben Anderson from Stearns County Park too, so they're available to answer any questions that maybe are better suited to them, but I, I wanted to address the question about approvals, okay? From a, a state perspective, typically, public approvals are, that's happening right now through this meeting and in terms of Scientific and Natural Areas, our funding typically requires that we get county board approval, okay, so that, when, if we get approval from the city of Wake Park tonight, then our, our next stop will be with Stearns County Board and typically, all county boards want to get more local input in terms of a, a resolution of approval, either from a township board or in this case from the city council. So that, that typically is where the public is engaged in the state process and as Planning Director Nirenberg said, there's no rezoning required here, there's no change in terms in terms of, I think, how the land is zoned or programmed to be used in a, a land use plan, the comprehensive land use plan. So, um, so there's really no city action that's occurring here other than, um, state law does require that you, that this has been presented to you, you're aware of what we are proposing to acquire, and that you provide an approval for that, that we can take to Stearns County Board.
All right, council got any questions? I got one question. I got that, that value, that P I L T payment is twenty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. Is that an annual payment, a one-time payment? What is that?
Yes, yeah, and, um-
So it's an annual payment?
It is an annual payment.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
It's, it, as, as Planning Director Nirenberg said, it's payment in lieu of taxes.
But it's every year that comes-
It's something that goes to, it's an annual payment to local governments.
Okay.
Um, when the state acquires, we, we understand that you're losing property tax gen, uh, revenue that you can generate. And so this P I L T, payment in lieu of taxes, was basically made to replenish revenue that a city or a township might lose.
Okay.
And, um, it's based on the most recent appraised value.
Yeah.
So, um-
Seven and a half cents for it, yeah.
Yep. And, um, I'll just quickly go through a couple of slides here.
Click, you tell me when you want me to-
Yeah, I'll, yeah, yeah.
You want me to click?
Um, sure, let's just, let's jump right through it here. I know you all know that Quarry Park is a unique and special place. And I'd just like to tell you quickly why we think it's a special place as, as a program. Um, obviously, there are a lot of rock outcrop communities, um, in that whole landscape. And they are very unique to central Minnesota, as you well know. Um, there are a couple other rock outcrop landscapes over by, um, Taylor's Falls. But other than that, this is, this is very unique and, um, it affects a type of grasslands, forests, et cetera, that may grow on a landscape like this. So, um, look, next slide please. These are some of the unique plants that grow in, in the rock outcrops of, of Quarry Park. And in that leftmost photo, you see all those low little lumpy things. Those are, uh, prickly pear cactus, brittle prickly pear cactus. And that center photo shows you it, uh, a close-up of it blooming. And they're not very common in Minnesota. Um, and it's something a lot of people don't know about, but, you know, di- did you know that, that native cactus grow here in St. Cloud? There they are. And, um, and then next to that is a small purple fringed orchid. And, um, those are, you know, those are unique too. Obviously, they're very charismatic. Um, it is a rare plant. There are several other rare plants, um, that occur out here at Quarry Park. Next slide. So I, I'd like to talk a little bit about Scientific and Natural Areas and, and their intended public uses. They're primarily focused on providing conservation, uh, study and research opportunities. Um, so that peop, the public can come, observe nature, take photographs, um, they can be used for education, and people can con- conduct formal research on, on Scientific and Natural Areas. Um, other activities may occur relative to nature study, and that, of course, would include hiking, cross-country skiing or snowshoeing as a way to get into the site to conduct nature study. Uh, next slide please. Um, SLAM. SLAM is Strategic Land Asset Management. This is something that has been set up with the, with the state and the DNR, working with local jurisdictions, because people have concerns. Um, they wanna make sure that we are prioritizing the lands that we are, uh, acquiring for conservation. Strategic Land Asset Management is a process that we go through to demonstrate that the lands that we intend to buy are meeting our internal goals. So we've got four here, um, that this is obviously very close to an urban area. Um, it does protect significant, uh, natural resources such as the rock outcrop communities. It protects water resources and promotes landscape resilient, uh, resiliency and carbon sequestration. Next slide. Uh, this is the same slide that we, um, that we saw a few minutes ago. And, uh, um, I think the next slide might be a little better, um, 'cause that shows the easements, um, that would provide access. There's been a, a little update. Um, you can see a road that angles and curves coming in from the northwest off of County, uh, County Highway one thirty-seven, a little farther up, and there, yeah, there you go. And that would be one of the proposed access points that follows an existing farm lane. This was at the suggestion of the Ardoffs and, um, we feel it works well for our purposes too. Um, this would be an access easement for management purposes only. This would not be a public access route to get into the SNA. Um, likewise, there's also the existing, uh, access easement along the south side that follows the, uh, power line and that we would be utilizing that too. So that, that shows you, um, the eighty acres and how we would intend to get to it.
I have a quick question for you. As long as you're in the, the house that's there, is that gonna be removed then from your science natural area?
Or it's not incorporated into it?
The house isn't it? Over here?
That's not part of it.
It's the, he's-
Within the boundaries.
No, it's the blue shaded area on your photo. He's got a different one up on his computer than Shawna does. It's the-
Put another one, put your back, put yours back on Shawna.
Hold on.
If you can, go back to the Google map one.
If I get out of his-
Yeah.
There you go, that one there.
It's the, it's the blue line, Mike.
This line here.
It's the dark blue line.
Here's the house you're talking about.
Yeah, it does, it, it goes across the southern border of the house. The parcel that currently has the house.
So this is an included, and it cuts off this. See, this, it cuts along right here. Oh, see, I got a tired, different diagram.
I think that's the whole parcel. This is eighty acres it's coming off of.
That's where we have to look at kinda the rejiggering of kinda the properties to ensure we're not-
Where the property lines split is gonna be, is what they're trying to show you, Mike.
The property lines and the sizes and those things. So we, we've yet to fully iron that out, but we're working on it.
So the, the actual line, which is on, uh, blue copy here-
That actually follows like this, the tree line.
Yeah. Yeah, now you did it. So it doesn't include that field basically as part of the project?
No.
Oh, okay, so I had a whole different drawing here on mine.
There you go.
That's it.
There's the one, that's the one. That's the one that's on the screen.
That's the blue line on that one. Oh, he's not looking at it.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, and this is following up from your question about a payment in lieu of taxes. Um, so that would be an annual payment of twenty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. Um, and, and I know that, um, I don't work specifically with PILT program and I know that there are minor changes, little fluctuations in the payment rate every few years, but that, that would be the annual amount that the city would see from the state of Minnesota. Uh, so our next steps are, again, I apologize for the, the error here in that we were requesting a resolution of approval for the, for the addition, the fee ownership addition, uh, to Quarry Park SNA. And then, uh, should the council provide approval tonight, then we would go to Stearns County Board and ask for their approval. And then, at the same time, what we didn't include in here would be that the Ardoffs would then pursue a minor subdivision or plating, whatever they determine is the best way and, you know, um, we have survey information that we can, we can provide for them too. And then we, after, after we get through all of this, then the state issues what's called an election to purchase. It's kind of the second half of a purchase agreement. They've signed the first half and then the state has to do its due diligence, including getting the approval tonight. And then once we, we, we get all those, then we issue the election to purchase, which completes the purchase agreement between the Ardoffs and the state of Minnesota. Um, and at the same time, we're still pursuing our other due diligence, doing our title review, et cetera, and then we close on the property. So I'm available and, uh, the three, three rest of us here are available for any questions.
All right, council, any questions?
No, I have none.
I need a motion for support, our, our approval.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You got it.
Thank you.
All right, approve bills.
I have no questions. I'll move to approve the bills.
I'll second that.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. I have, uh, don't forget Day of Caring. I think, uh, Zach is going to probably send that out yet and whatever and get everybody to sign up, but it's, it is September eighteenth at nine in the morning. We talked about it last time. Joint Cities Meeting is in Sock Rapids on Tuesday, August twenty-ninth, starts at six o'clock. And I, Shawna got an email from, from, uh, Hannah Desch-
Deshepper.
Deshepper, Patrol Officer twenty-three nineteen. Uh, I just wanted to send an email and let you know about how impressed I was with the fire department on a call yesterday. Not sure when this was. Sa- Saturday?
Yeah, so for Saturday.
There was a drowning that occurred in Quarry Two at Quarry Park, which was dispatched around five fifteen PM, and the Wake Park Fire was quick to respond, arrive, and was very impressed to see that they were the first to have their banana boat in the water before other fire departments and the county units that had responded to start searching for the victim. Despite this being a county park and a county call, Paul Kozlowski took the initiative to create a plan as to what everyone would do once the victim was retrieved from the water, and it was a plan, plan that worked out very well once the victim was located. These types of calls are tough for everyone involved, especially with how hot it was out yesterday. But all Wake Park Fire personnel who were on the scene were level-headed, professional and helpful. Thanks.
Good job.
You're going, chief. Chief. That's all I got.
Um, just looking at, um, for next council agendas, I am, if at this point with the Labor Day weekend coming up, we, um, may not have anything for agendas at that point, so we would be waiting then until our second meeting in September, which would be the eighteenth, which would also be our budget work session as well.
Great.
And then we would look at doing a meeting on the, uh, the following week, on twenty-fifth, to finalize the preliminary budget.
Okay. Dave, you got anything?
Three projects start next week. Park shit on, uh, starting next Monday.
All right, good.
That on Third Street South?
Starting on Third First, yep.
No, there's all kinds going on there right now.
Bill?
Nothing.
John?
Sir.
Chief?
Nothing.
Chief? Assistant chief? Paul?
No.
All right, if nothing else, we are adjourned at seven twelve.